Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, second board work session for Wednesday, March 31st, 2021, 10:11 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, and County Manager Ramiro Chavez, and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. The public can follow along through live stream on our Thurston County YouTube channel, and conference call option is available for those without Internet access at 360-252-9020. The PIN is 1234. Morning's topic is Disaster Recovery Council Interlocal Agreement. We have one hour slated till 11 a.m., getting a little bit of a late start. Kurt Hardens here, Director Emergency Services, and some folks, other folks that I'll let Kurt introduce, but I'm going to turn this to County Manager to frame today's briefing.
Thank you, Commissioner. So really going to take you back is to February 2019, that was when the, on the first couple months of Commissioner Mensah as a new Commissioner. That's when, I don't, I don't believe Commissioner Edwards attended this training that it was held in Ocean Shores. It was the Integrated Emergency Management Class the federal government provided, where it was the administrative staff as well as elected officials from, from the federal stated tribal local governments participated in this training. And it was, I believe, one of the most fantastic trains I personally attended because it really framed the opportunity as to how we can collaborate on a regional basis, response in case of an emergency. And during the, the, those conversations, one of the, one of the many outcomes of that session was to investigate the opportunity to form a somewhat of a regional disaster, disaster recovery council. And that was one of the, the elements that we went through as part of the conversation, and again, one of the deliverables of that training as well. So what you're going to be hearing today is that portion of it. And Kurt can provide additional feedback on that and on, on the background related to where we are at this point, but that's the, the umbrella of this conversation today.
So, good morning Commissioners, again Kurt Hardens, Director of Emergency Services. With me today is Sandy Ecker, she's Emergency Management Manager and within the Emergency Management Division. There's also Sherri Nevin, she's one of our Emergency Management Coordinators, and then Paul Brewster, he's with the Thurston Regional Planning Council. I would like to say that Sandy and Paul were both at Ocean Shores for that FEMA training as well. And so what we're going to do here is walk you through some of the history that the County Manager did a great job of doing the introduction on, and then some of the steps forward that we're looking for, for this interlocal agreement. So, you know, today's discussion is about that interlocal cooperative agreement that if approved, it's going to form a disaster recovery council within the county. And the council will be charged with further developing the regional disaster recovery framework. And as Romero said, that the Thurston County Emergency Management Council convenes, actually I should say, going back before the IEMC in February of 2019, the Thurston County Emergency Management Council, or EMC, traditionally has convened executive disaster recovery seminars annually. They've been doing that since 2013, and that's for all the elected officials and senior officials within Thurston County, and it goes across jurisdictional boundaries. One of the main objectives with these seminars is to increase the region's policymakers and key management staff awareness of potential hazards and their impacts to our communities. Another objective is to establish broad leadership support to increase the county, cities, tribes, and special purpose districts' pre-disaster recovery planning capabilities. So, the federal emergency management agencies' national disaster recovery framework allows for a whole community approach to preparedness, which also recognizes that everyone can contribute to and benefit from our region's preparedness efforts. These include individuals, families, including those with disabilities and other access and functional needs, businesses, community and faith-based groups, nonprofit organizations, and all levels of government. So what I'd like now is to ask Paul Brewster from TRPC to talk a little bit about that integrated emergency management course that Romero had led off with in the introduction, and give some more of the perspective from that course.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. So Paul Brewster, Thurston Regional Planning Council. So I was fortunate to work with the Thurston County Emergency Management Council on developing a draft recovery framework, which is really kind of a blueprint. We took a multi-jurisdictional approach to create a blueprint for how local communities could work with federal, state, and other local governments and tribes to have kind of a systematic, timely recovery from a major disaster. And at that integrated emergency management course, our scenario was a magnitude-nine Cascadia subduction zone earthquake. And so while at Ocean Shores, we did have sort of like classroom-style lectures, but also breakout groups and discussions and exercises that focused on testing that recovery framework that we put together. And to help you kind of visualize what that recovery framework looked like in, in terms of the decision-making bodies and the people who would be involved with recovery and the stakeholders, without a visual, I'm going to have you imagine kind of a pyramid. And at the top of that pyramid was a organization called the Recovery Task Force. And this was a group of elected officials. Commissioner Mensah, you were on that Recovery Task Force, if I recall, but also that we, we had a recovery manager's office that is really like an executive who is charged with leading the staff on developing recovery across all sectors of government and coordinating amongst local partners, but that recovery manager's office would be working directly on behalf of policies and directions set by the Recovery Task Force. Then that was further broken down into additional functionality is what we call recovery support functions, and this would cover like housing, jobs, and economy, schools, and health. That was broken up of subject matter experts across the county. So Romero did point out there was several county department heads there, including Robin Campbell, Thurston County Public Works, folks from Thurston County Public Health who were involved. Over 80 participants from our region, both public and private nonprofit stakeholders were involved. So we spent four days testing that recovery framework, and at the end of that exercise, I, I think the participant, participants realized that a lot of synergy was developed, that there was a lot of recognition that pre-disaster recovery planning is a priority for the Thurston County region and emergency management stakeholders. And so the electeds who attended that event really wanted to memorialize Thurston County's continuing efforts and pre-disaster recovery planning, which, which is really the origins for this disaster recovery council interlocal cooperative agreement. And so this agreement really brings together partners to start to come up with plans and recommendations to advise the signatory parties to this agreement as to what that recovery task force and recovery manager's office will look like, what it will be composed of, and just start to talk about some of its, its procedures and how we can implement such entities to continue disaster recovery planning. Now Sandy is going to kind of talk a little bit more about the interlocal cooperative agreement itself.
Well, thank you and good morning. While following the IEMC, in order to maintain the synergy and the momentum that was created there, the, the recommendation was to create a group of people that would carry that charge forward, and that is the Recovery Council. And this is the agreement to establish that council. So, following the IEMC, the Emergency Management Council drafted this interlocal agreement, and actually the agreement itself is modeled after the interlocal agreement that formed the EMC itself, the Emergency Management Council. And we, we presented this agreement, and it was back in 2019, December of 2019, at our last executive seminar. And following that presentation, we started to circulate the agreement for review by the region's councils and commissions and legal staff. And I have to admit that last year, the agreement lay dormant because of COVID, and now we've revitalized it and are moving it forward, and it has been, it has finished being reviewed, and that was completed this last month, and it has been reviewed by the county's prosecuting attorney's office. The agreement itself activates when there are six signatories to, to the agreement. We currently believe strongly that Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, Cota, and Yum intend to sign it in the very near future. We also believe that with a little bit more outreach, the other communities are going to sign this agreement as well. And then each signatory has a representative on the Disaster Recovery Council. The exception to that are the tribes. We're very interested in having the tribes participate in this agreement and this process, but we are not requiring the tribes to actually sign the agreement itself. So what the agreement does is it, it talks about the roles and duties and responsibilities of the Disaster Recovery Council. And the first is, of course, for them to establish their bylaws and their meeting processes and schedule, but the second is like what Paul said, really what the council needs to do is develop a work plan and assign work in order to create the recovery organization that we practiced at the Integrated Emergency Management Course, and the one that's described in the Disaster Recovery Framework. It's the one with the task force and the recovery manager's office. And what they need to do is also to consult with the community, consult with emergency managers and stakeholders in this process, share information, make recommendations, make recommendations around recovery activities, and including what the scope of work looks like and what the budget for that scope of work might, might involve. And they need to shepherd the creation of any agreement or other process that will put in place this recovery organization and formalize it. So basically, this local agreement will stay in place until the objectives are met and the scope of work is completed. So, how are we going to fund this effort? Well, actually, we were able to receive grant funding through the Department of Homeland Security. We, we proposed a project for this work, and it was awarded. So we were, we received $45,000 to do this work, and that grant funding agreement is in place, and, and the grant funding is in our current budget for us to do this work. That $45,000 will be for TRPC, a contract with TRPC, and it will be to not only facilitate the Disaster Recovery Council, but it will also be to, to update our recovery framework with the lessons learned in Ocean Shores, and also to expand it to include all of the recovery functions. So are there any questions about the agreement itself?
Yes, I do have a, a quick question, Sandy.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
As we move forward on this, is there any chance that we could list on one sheet of paper, or maybe a preamble leading up to this, so that we know who all the asked participants are, municipalities and such, and groups, and who has signed it? Because it always makes me nervous when everybody gets their own separate sheet, and then we don't know who was asked, who wasn't, who chose to sign and participate, and who didn't. I think it just gives us a historical concept as to what we're building here. Just a suggestion, I don't know how you'd handle suggestions, and I don't know how my seatmates feel. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahia.
Yes, I, I wasn't sure if she was gonna, are you, no, okay, I can focus, okay. I just want to make sure I wasn't in trouble. So I have a couple questions. So right now, we're working with the other jurisdictions, Cota, Lacey, Yum, Olympia, Tomwater, and then of course, us. And we're considering the tribes, but have we also considered, I mean, approaching organizations such as United Way? I know they have a huge volunteer power, or maybe the Moore Wright Group who are at their recovery center warehouse here. Is that a plan, or are we just going to keep it to jurisdictions?
At this point in time, our focus was on the jurisdictions to get their signatures. However, once the Disaster Recovery Council convenes, the concept is to expand the work to other private nonprofits and special districts, even perhaps the private sector, and to make the group comprehensive and really represent the whole community of Thurston County.
Thank you. My other questions is in regards to funding. You mentioned the $45,000 grant that's going to go to the TRPC, but is there other funding that the county will have to put forward? That's not counting the staff time that we're already having to put forward, but is there other funds that we're going to have to allocate to this?
We're going to try and use that $45,000 to get as far down this road as we possibly can. It's, it's possible that it won't be enough, that there will be additional meeting facilitation that is required.
And if I could jump in on that as well, we're also looking down the road towards additional federal funding, either through Department of Homeland Security, through FEMA, through some of their grant opportunities that are out there. This, we're looking at this as seed money essentially to start this moving forward, and so we're going to be applying for additional federal grants down the road as well.
Thank you. And then, one more question.
To dovetail to your first question, Commissioner, if I could amplify that a little bit?
Yes, okay.
Okay. We already have private nonprofits integrated into our Thurston County Emergency Comprehensive CEMP, Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. In other words, as an example, we utilized those, the United Way, last year during the Nisqually flooding incident. So we already have them integrated into the Thurston County piece, but we are going to expand that into this Disaster Recovery Council as well. So I just want to let you know that we are working with our private nonprofits at the county level. We are going to expand that, as Sandy indicated, to others and to a larger audience, too.
Thank you, Kurt. And then my last question is in regards to the objectives that were mentioned. I was just wondering, you know, are those objectives going to be set by the DRC? Are they already set beforehand? How does meeting those objectives work? And what are the objectives?
Well, the agreement does describe the, the roles and responsibilities for the council, but the, once the council meets, they're going to have to develop their basic project plan to get this worked on, the objectives, the timeline, and really put the details to the, to that work that's described in the interlocal agreement. And then, and then what they'll do is they'll, they'll create that scope of work and also define what is needed to support it, the budget, the effort, and who's involved in doing that.
Thank you.
Chair, could I just have one more comment, please?
Yes, sir.
As we move forward with this, I see that you have, and those cities, towns, tribes, other organizations, and other organizations, I take it that kind of covers everything that we have not mentioned, but I would hope that early on, we would get the Port of Olympia and the fire districts and the school districts, signatories on this as well, because they play an integral part, maybe being able to utilize their infrastructure or whatever it might be. Early on, and I'd like to have them be a signatory to the same status as any of the municipalities or, or the county board or anything like that. Thank you.
Yes, we, we'll be sure to do that, and, and we did, we did learn during the exercise at Ocean Shores how important those entities are to the county-wide recovery process.
Thanks.
So just to clarify, Sandy, are you saying the Port of Olympia, fire districts, and the school districts will be signing this agreement as well? That was the question the Commissioner was asked.
But you could, go ahead, Kurt.
I just want to clarify that commitment.
What we're going to do is we're reaching out to all those other jurisdictions as well, and they will be part of that outreach as we move forward. So they are going to be an integral part of this, but we wanted to keep this to the Emergency Management Council representatives who already are formed the Emergency Management Council for this interlocal agreement. As the Disaster Recovery Council moves forward, we will make, be inclusive of all those other entities as well. So the, the intent is not to mandate or request or, or to these other organizations to sign the agreement, but the intent is to bring them into this framework so that they're part of the process.
I, I guess I'd like to expand on that just a little bit, because possibly, you know, when the chips are down and we're really in the middle of a mess, it would be real handy to know that we could use the Rochester School District buildings, for an example, as emergency shelter, or, I'll just, you know, grab that as an example. To have that done and have those people already have bought off on this, I think, maybe to the point of a signatory on the whole thing, so they feel they are an integral player in this whole process, because every one of those smaller jurisdictions are going to be very important, depending on the geographical area of what we're happening to deal with. And, and I'd like to make sure those organizations know they're recognized to, for their importance as well. That's all, thank you.
And, and the intent is to include them, but we didn't want to put an obstacle in front of them that they were required to sign the interlocal agreement in order to participate. So we want to make sure we are inclusive and not put obstacles in their way, but we, we understand what you're saying, Commissioner. I believe our intent is to include anyone who wants to be part of this agreement.
Thank you.
I would just add to all of that, because those were kind of the questions I was going to ask, because Commissioner Mahia talked, focused on nonprofits, you guys focused on jurisdictions, but there was a whole range of intermediate, I'll call them, groups that were at the Emergency Management Conference, intercity transit, school just, every school district, or multiple school districts represented at the IEMC conference. I don't remember fire district, but yeah, there were, there were fire districts, not, maybe not the littler ones, but the bigger ones were represented. So all those groups, yeah, I was just trying to feel out like how, you know, at what point are they going to slot into this? Because they were obviously there and super important to our planning and, and stuff. They don't, they don't sit on the RTF, I think. And, you know, they may not have legal, you know, they may not feel comfortable signing contracts, and they don't have legal departments to run it through and stuff, so I wouldn't, I get why you wouldn't want to make it contingent on all of them, you know, signing off in a formalistic way, but obviously we'd want to integrate them as, as deeply as, as practicable. Sounds like that's been thought through. Okay, what's next then, Kurt?
So next on this piece here is, is to, plan the...
Oh, sorry, Ramiro, let's plug Ramiro here.
You know, when, when this concept came, and I, I'm going to follow up to Commissioner, one of Commissioner's Mahia's question, there was a, a, at least a couple jurisdictions that were resistant to this approach because they didn't know about the commitment in terms of funding. And that, that has been satisfied, and I know that on your item four, under the finance section of the agreement, I believe that is, that gives the latitude to explore local funding for this, for this council? And obviously, you know, the, the, as you stated, the, this new council will provide recommendations for funding to local jurisdictions, they wouldn't have the ability to implement or request funding, but is that the intent?
The intent is, is to seek resources across all levels and all forms, but having said that, I know that one of the intents also is to how to, we can establish a regional approach to recovery, because some of the items that we're going to be talking about are going to cross jurisdictional boundaries. So in other words, something that impacts the city of Olympia will more than likely also impact Thurston County or Lacey here. And so the ability to reach that process for financing, the recovery piece, is going to be critical. That's, more of that's to be developed. I know Robin was working on some of that as well, and I'll just defer to her for a minute, because I know she was starting that process.
Thank you, Kurt. I, I was starting that process. We held a few meetings of finance people from the, representing the local jurisdictions. The, the resistance to a regional approach of funding emergencies was extreme, and it's going to take a lot to get to a point where we have any kind of agreement on that. I don't think that we can possibly get there without the infrastructure proposed in this interlocal agreement in place. And I also would say that when I read the finance section, section four of the interlocal agreement, that's talking about how to fund this council. It's not talking about how to fund a response to an emergency. So, those are very different things. I think that we have an extremely long way to go toward getting any kind of interlocal agreements when it comes to funding emergencies, especially if we take response to COVID-19 as an example.
Absolutely, and, and to add to that, one of the areas that we want to have in place is that framework, like you mentioned, Robin, that once, once a disaster strikes, we want to be able to have a framework in place that we can work from towards those funding agreements down the road. And I do know the federal government does look for regional approaches... And I do know the federal government does look for regional approaches when they look for recovery as well as response. But this is just a step in that direction to be able to try to establish at least the operational recovery piece. And then to finance it down the road is going to be, as Robin said, more challenging.
So the next thing that we wanted to do is just have Paul speak briefly about the scope of work that TRPC will be implementing to support this Recovery Council.
Thank you, Sandy. And I appreciate the conversation and the questions the commissioners are asking. This grant funding that Sandy described a few minutes ago is actually going to fulfill two separate, but really parallel projects that go hand in hand. The first one is the subject that's handed, and that is facilitating and convening the Disaster Recovery Council. And I've scoped out six meetings for this project. And that's really just an effort to get everybody on the same page, to research whole community approaches to pre-disaster recovery, planning and post-disaster recovery operations. We're looking at what would be required, what to operationalize a recovery task force and a recovery manager's office. What types of expertise and functions would we want within that recovery manager's office? Also exploring kind of where the communities, that is, the signatories to the interlocal cooperative agreement stand on in terms of their positions on multi-jurisdictional approaches to recovery. What are those areas, what are those thresholds by which a community is going to want to manage certain levels of recovery on their own versus be involved in a multi-jurisdictional approach? I think that's really important to ask and explore. And in talking to some community stakeholders and formulating a recommendation. So I concur with Robin. I think we have a long road. This project right now is to continue carrying the ball down the field to have those conversations and try to regain some of that momentum we established at the IEMC two years ago. The second project I reference to is updating the Disaster Recovery Framework. And so for those of you who attended the IEMC, you should recall that we exercised four recovery support functions. That was housing, jobs, and economy, and I would add finance to that, healthcare, and schools and education. What we did not exercise was infrastructure and utilities and natural and cultural resources. So this parallel project would be looking at developing frameworks for those two recovery support functions that were left out. And like we did prior to the IEMC, we'll be convening focus groups from across the community, including nonprofit entities, to discuss these additional recovery support functions. So that's when we bring in a lot more stakeholders. And the Disaster Recovery Council will have a role also in kind of evaluating what those recovery support functions are coming up with. So we're going to test them with some additional work to help TRPC and the planning team review and evaluate those additional draft recovery support function policy frameworks that we're putting together. So that's, we'll be summarizing the efforts of the Disaster Recovery Council in a report that we hope that each of the representatives to the Recovery Council will then in turn take back to their governing bodies for review, discussion, further evaluation, so that we can then start to queue up and identify what the next steps are, and looking for opportunities to continue implementation of the recommendations out of that report.
Is the Disaster Recovery Council made up of elected officials or...?
Good question. It could be. It depends on who the signatory party wants to appoint to that Disaster Recovery Council. So it could either be an elected official, it could be a staff member.
Questions for Paul and Matty?
Yes, just a quick one, maybe. One of the things as we move forward on this whole issue is during the earthquake, I don't know, 20 years ago, I guess it was, the sheriff's office lost communications, and communications were spotty throughout the county. And we really depended on the ham radio operators at that point in time to help us fill that gap. And I know that the fire districts, I've been talking to the fire commissioners about this exact topic and utilizing the ham process. I know some of their districts are putting up ham operator, ham radio operations and getting licensed and all that. So I think that'd be an integral part of this. And again, coming back to how important those individual smaller districts are as we move forward, depending on where the disaster is that we deal with. So I think there's, I think, Paul, you're right. There's a lot of work to do before we're going to get there, I guess. So thank you.
So I think Kurt now is going to talk about next steps in our process.
Oh, I was going to say the next steps and then answering any further questions. But to take this interlocal agreement and place it on the commissioner's agenda through the AIS process for consideration, we have a tentative date of April 20th. But also to take any guidance from the commissioners or the county manager or assistant manager on any guidance for any kind of direction other than putting it on an agenda item.
So maybe following up to an early question Commissioner Edwards asked is, are the other jurisdictions going to be signing, or the county is going to be the first one who's going to be signing this agreement? If the board approves it?
So right now, we anticipate the county being the first one to sign it if the board approves it. But at the same time, we look at the county being the leader, so to speak, on this. And I think the other jurisdictions are maybe waiting for the county to take action or take some type of approach to it. So I think that we'll probably, if the county signs first, we will see the other jurisdictions that we mentioned earlier, the other five, falling in line fairly quickly.
So have there been presentations similar to this one already with the other jurisdictions?
The EMC members took this back to their other jurisdictions. They've had legal reviews at the other jurisdictions. They've had presentations at those other jurisdictions, similar to what we're talking about here. And so that's all been taking place with the jurisdictions that represent the Emergency Management Council in Thurston County.
And those city councils have indicated willingness to sign?
That's our understanding from the representatives of the Emergency Management Council, yes.
Other questions?
No, thank you.
I'll just add, if I may. We did put together just a brief two-page handout that summarizes what the purpose of this interlocal cooperative agreement is with our staff contact information that we'll share with you after the meeting. It's something I think we'll want to share with the other jurisdictions as well so that their councils can preview it. And I think that's something we intend to track is sort of the progress of how this interlocal cooperative agreement is is working its way through the other governing bodies.
Robin?
Curious, Romero, if this has been a topic of discussion at the mayor's meeting or the, not the county, but the administrator meeting that you have with the city?
No, this has not been part of any of those discussions as far as I'm aware, no. So maybe I can, I believe my next, my next, I'm sorry.
The mayor's meeting Friday, so I could ask if the other jurisdictions have heard of this or at least at the mayor level and are planning to move forward on it.
Yeah, I think this is a great topic for discussion at that level.
Yeah, that would be good. So my suggestion is maybe to pause on submitting an AIS until we have an opportunity to do the reaching out. I will reach out to the city managers and see where they are in their process. And Commissioner Mr. Sted, he will reach out to his counterparts for the jurisdictions, just to have a sense. And I believe that is going to probably address some of one of the Commissioner Edwards' questions, where they are at the jurisdictions really on this. So will that work?
We'll go ahead and we will either poll or, I'm not sure how to cancel an AIS, but we at least defer it down the road quite a bit so that it won't pop up on an agenda.
It will not pop up.
Right, that's true. I know who controls the agenda. So got it?
Okay.
The commissioners will not look at something if they're not comfortable having it on the agenda. But we'll go ahead and take care of that, we'll add to that. And then we'll touch base or wait to hear down the road as you reach out to the other jurisdictions.
Okay, thanks, Kurt, and thanks, Paul, and Jerry, Sandy. Are we done, Romero, for this morning?
Oh, that's it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Everybody back at 2:00 PM on a budget issue. Return for today. Thank you.